And every reading two weeks reads out.
We're gonna start our meeting out with a prayer by Pastor Billy Oliver of the Connor Stone Baptist Church, and our pledge by the Council of Respect.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father God, full of love, full of mercy, full of grace, we come into your presence today just thanking you and praising your holy name for giving us the gift of the breath of life today, for giving us the strength and the energy that we need to come into this place and provide the function that this council and this mayor is meant to provide for this city. God, we just pray that you would be a blessing at this meeting today and that this meeting would bless you in all the proceedings. We pray, Father, that you would just place your hands on the minds of Mr. Mayor and this council, and Lord, give them wisdom as they make important decisions to run this city. And God, we also pray that you would place your minds on their hearts, and Lord, make them instruments for your righteousness. And God, we just pray for your forgiveness of our sins because we know that we do fail you every single day. We pray, God, that everything that happens here in this room today would glorify you because you are the one that gets all the glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let us face the flag for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its limited justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask our city clerk, will she please call the roll?
Mayor McLendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior.
Here.
Councilor Booth.
Here.
Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Mary.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
We got ten presents, we have a coin. You all see the bid opening, if you have reviewed them, someone make a motion to refer them back. These are the bid openings for the overlay program, you know, the streets that we all looked at, that we asked, and we actually came up with 1.1 million. And if you all didn't see them, I'm gonna make sure we get a copy there, but Chris' contract is going to be. It was 1,112,750. Well, I mean, I think last week we announced that they wanted to be, but I don't think you all voted to approve it.
Yes, it says upon the vote board, voting was unanimous to approve. Those were the minutes from the last meeting. Because we handled that last time. I just thought it was on the agenda by error. Because it wasn't on my agenda, it's on their, I think it's on some others, but it wasn't on this one.
I mean, I think we approved it before I remembered as well, but if you want to do it again, just to be safe, I think you can. Send it back. But I thought, I think it's already been done, is what I recall.
It is.
I recall looking at the bids last, last meeting.
I don't think it would be out of line if we...
Well, that just, I mean, you all don't mind.
But there seems to be some questions about if it was approved or not. I think it was approved.
The city clerk just sat there and told you it was approved.
Well, I was gonna say, if we're all confused, let's do it again.
You can, but you've already done it.
But just, just make the motion.
Mayor, make, I'll make a motion, we approved the minutes for the overlay project.
No, the over the bids.
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion to second. If there's no further discussion, can I get aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved once again. All right. I'm gonna move down to old business, city attorney.
This is the third reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2420, section one, subsection two, granting a special use permit located at 1299 Kuhn Road, allowing future expansion of a sanitary landfill and associated activities in the city of West Memphis, CVE Conservation Extraterritorial Zoning District of the city of West Memphis, Critton County, Arkansas.
You all know, last week, we had a work session between the council, airport representatives, as well as the public, I see them here, I see the judge as well. We talked about it, what they were trying to do, and Council McCrum went to the airport.
Yeah, the airport commission called an executive meeting, or emergency meeting, and here's what they decided. We had a called commission meeting this morning via telephone and discussed the landfill proposal. They all agree, they being the commissioners, with the approved approval that the FAA gave, and since the height will be monitored by ADEQ, they will all, we're all on board with it as long as they are able to receive quarterly reports regarding the present height.
All right, so you all.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed, will you give that ordinance the number, please?
Ordinance number 2676, 2676.
2676, let's move back up for a minute, can I get a motion to second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Ms. Mohammed, will you do me the honor of reading 02, this one, and 02, this two, 03, this two, and then 01, this three?
I'd like to make a motion to read 01, 02, and 03 by title only.
Take a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, city attorney, you know.
I'm gonna be reading what's shown as 02 on the agenda, but this is the first one in order. An ordinance providing for the levy of a one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax within the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Make a motion to second, suspend the rules, place on the third reading.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pass.
No.
Will you call it, Duro?
Councilor Booth.
Yes.
Councilor Katz.
No.
Councilor Crum.
No.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Holt.
No.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilor Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilor Monday.
Yes.
Councilor Mary.
Yes.
Councilor Willis.
No.
All right, we have 64, it passes, it's approved, so, city attorney.
Well, I think, I think in order to, it's gotta be a seven or six, two-thirds vote, but the mayor can vote, I'm not sure that's gonna make two-thirds.
Well.
It won't. No.
Well, it'll be on the agenda for the next reading, and then after that, I'm gonna call a special meeting before the time of, so we'll have a special city council meeting probably next week after the 15th meeting.
Now, Mayor, I would definitely go ahead and tell it next week, so we can have the third and final reading before the effective date.
Okay. Ms. McBride, can you come, I just wanna make sure I got these dates, so Mr. Bowman?
I think Brian, McBride's got the legal issue on the dates.
Okay.
State law requires that the ordinance be adopted and filed with the county clerk at least 70 days in advance of the election on November the 5th. I'd have to count the days, it's roughly August the 27th that that ordinance would have to be filed with the county clerk, 26th to the 27th. So, you put it on its first reading today, you could put it on its second reading, you could suspend the rules at the next meeting and put it on its third reading as well and adopt at the next meeting, but assuming that the vote holds as it did today, then the mayor is correct, a special meeting would be necessary in order to adopt the ordinance prior to that 70-day deadline.
Mayor, if I may, whether you're for or against is, is, I think we need to go ahead and have a special court meeting next Thursday, same time, and then we'll have our next meeting on the 15th where all this can be resolved, one way or the other, give more than sufficient time to handle all the paperwork that needs to get taken care of.
Counselors, what do you all, to the city council?
It's taken in the form of a motion, Mr. Katz.
Yes, I make a motion that we have a special court meeting on the 8th.
The 8th?
At 1 o'clock, to handle the specific issue of the sales tax.
Second motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we gonna have another special council meeting on the 8th, that they had to get this on the second reading?
1 o'clock.
1 o'clock. And then we'll move forward on the 15th will be the third reading, read it out.
All right, so, the next one I'm reading is shown as ordinance number three on the agenda, but it's an ordinance calling a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, on the question of levying a citywide one-fourth of one percent sales and use tax and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
It's read for its first time, so we'll get it back on the 8th agenda.
All right, and the last one of the three is an ordinance calling a special election in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, on the questions of issuing bonds under amendment number 62 to the Constitution of the State of Arkansas for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, levying a new three-fourths of one percent sales and use tax for the purpose of retiring such bonds and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
You hear the red for its first time, it'll be back also on the 8th, 1 P.M.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Could you explain the two-thirds vote again? After you were talking about if it goes to the public.
Oh, if, if the voters.
If the council.
Yeah, not, not suspension of the rules, but the issue, yes, yes. So, this is with respect to the bonds themselves, okay? Our statute allows, with a two-thirds vote of the council, you can vote not to levy the tax for the bonds. So, in the hypothetical that we had discussed, if the quarter cent for debt service for O and M does not pass, and any of the bonds questions do pass, then you, as a council, with a two-thirds vote, could say, we are not going to move forward with those projects, and we're not going to levy that three-fourths tax that was voted for the repayment of those bonds. But it only applies to that three-quarter cent tax, it does not apply to the quarter. Does that help clarify?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
But it does require a two-thirds vote, which it would require, in the case of your council, seven out of 10 votes.
The reason I ask you is, I was unaware of that, so I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yes, sir, it's specific to sales and use tax bonds in Arkansas, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, are we, are we voting to let the public go out to vote on this? So, this is not the city council, I just wanna make it perfectly clear, this is not city council saying that or imposing this onto our citizens, this is basically just trying to get it on.
The ballot.
On the ballot, so.
Exactly correct.
So, some of us want it on the ballot according to the vote today, and some of us don't want it on the ballot.
This is simply allowing the voters to vote on these questions, these five questions, on November the 5th, it is not.
I just wanted to really bring that home because a lot of people may think the city council is imposing this onto the public, but we're not. The only thing, if it passes, we are doing is saying that, yes, it's okay for it to go on the ballot, so our citizens can vote whether or not we want this, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mohammed, for bringing that up, because I was gonna bring it up later.
Councilor Maho.
This is what I feel like to, I agree, it's our job to make sure that the city of West Memphis will have a chance to vote on it, whether we approve it or not, it's your job to decide whether you want it or not, all right?
But if we don't approve it to go on the ballot, then they can't go out and vote for it.
It's on the ballot.
So, what we were trying to do today is get it approved to go on the ballot. But if we don't approve it to go on the ballot, it's dead.
Right, it goes on the ballot. I'll prove that it goes on the ballot.
Well, definitely, it'll be back for a second reading on the 8th, at 1 o'clock, so we'll move it to the second reading on the 8th, then we'll read it out on the 15th, so. Also, I had no permission request, committees, what committees and commissions have met?
The.
Parks.
We.
Airport. Chamber of Commerce. Personnel. Budget. Public Works. Police. A and P. Also, we're gonna start getting the money report from Main Street as well.
Okay, that'd be good.
Any other?
Well, we did, during the, during the count, the airport commission meeting, in front of your seats are three resumes, you should have three resumes. Everybody have three? Like, three different, right? Three different resumes? Because I, I. There's a, these three resumes are candidates to fill two vacancies on the airport commission. We had two members that had, had to resign their seats, and these are the resumes that I was given by the airport commission. You're not gonna vote on them today, but I've given them to you so you can review them, and they will be on the agenda on the 15th.
Does that conclude your report? Were there any other, the A and P, A and P meeting?
Oh, we haven't met, oh, we did meet. We didn't have, we didn't have anything on.
Were there any other committees or commissions who, I may overlook? All right, here it now, I had one appointment to the Parks Commission, Ms. Lavanda Taylor, you all seen, have her resume, and you know, normally what we do, you all take two weeks to look over, revere it, and decide at the next council meeting you all will vote whether or not you all wanna place on the Parks Committee. All right. I got, that's an appointment, a presentation, I have Director Rose here, I want him to come up and speak on the port security grant.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, city council, you want me to talk about the AWIN project? Sure, we are, we are coming to a close on that project, as you all know, you know, a $6 million public safety communication system that we've been working on for the past two years. We are finally at the stages where we are getting infrastructure programmed and getting it complete. We have built a radio tower out at the West Memphis PD firing range, and it is completed construction. A few more things to tidy up that site, we gotta get the fence up around the building, get it secured, and then that site will be monitored by the Arkansas Wireless Information Network, which is a part of the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management. All of that infrastructure's up. Last week, we put in two mobile radios at the West Memphis PD dispatch center, so we can go ahead and get West Memphis PD online, and we anticipate beginning the program of their portable radios Monday and Tuesday. That will move West Memphis PD over to the AWIN system on the infrastructure that is already in place at the sheriff's office while we transition to bringing the West Memphis site online. We anticipate having this whole program completed around the end of October, 1st of November, but it is, it is really gonna begin moving very quickly now, that all of the infrastructure is in place. Our next step is to program our mobile radios and our police cars, then we'll move to fire, and then we'll move to every other department. The, you know, as we have built this AWIN system, we've also gone through this process of merging these two public safety answering points between West Memphis and the county, and that project is moving along very quickly now as well. Talked to Director Mike Strayhorn out the sheriff's office earlier this week, and they are, what our big holdup right now is, is furniture, you know, console furniture for the, for the additional personnel coming in out there. We anticipate his consoles coming in this month, and then September 16th through the 20th, we have allocated to move the West Memphis dispatch equipment out there to the sheriff's office. Now, I'm talking about everything, you know, the, the whole setup will move out there, and there's still a little bit of, you know, probably some legal and, you know, administrative information that needs to be worked out, as far as, you know, our personnel, you know, becoming county employees, and this, that, and the other, but, you know, Judge Willis, I don't know if Judge is still here or not, but I know he is, him and his team are really, you know, managing that as, from, from the county's point of view. But, thank you again, and let me be real clear about that, you know, for voting on this project. And we're sitting here talking about a sales tax, and we're talking about funding sources for public safety. Now, keep in mind that this project came into fruition because we got $2 million from ARPA that was dedicated to this, and we've secured over $2 million worth of port security grant funding. So, four of a $6 million project has essentially come from the federal government, you know, so, that, I think that's important to illustrate that, that radios, this whole communication system is a perishable asset, and when I say perishable asset, I mean, in about 10 years, we're gonna need six more million dollars to, you know, to buy more radios, you know, to, to keep our infrastructure up, to keep it from the point that it was at where we started this project. You know, we, we can't have firemen and policemen with failing radios. And I think we know going forward now what we're looking like in that picture, and how, how best to take advantage of some of these revenue sources, and I don't think there's any other way to do it besides a public safety tax, or some type of dedicated revenue stream for this, and I'm not just talking about radios, you know, fire trucks, police cars, turnout gear, bulletproof vests, the whole nine yards, you know, the list goes on and on. So, we have, I just wanna thank you again for, for the, accepting the vision, you know, that, that we wanted to get this project off the ground, you know. I spent a number of years in public safety here in the city, working on radio systems that, that were failing, I know the police department is probably sick to death of what they've been operating on, and, and I think this project is well worth the money that you all approved for it, so, thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
You know what I got.
I know you do, shoot away.
On the cost of moving the 911 and combining the 911 together, are those separate costs? Or is the county paying for that, or?
Well, 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 we're really, there's really not a big cost because our, our four consoles that we bought for the new AWIN system are still in Jonesboro, we haven't installed them yet, so we're gonna install them out there at the county. So, the price that we've paid for the installation of this product is gonna go ahead and go in out there at the sheriff's office, so that's not gonna cost us anything. You remember, we originally scoped this project to be built at the West Memphis PD.
Right.
And then, once we really found out that we knew we were gonna have to merge, we scrapped that process and, and re-scoped it to build out there at the sheriff's office because we were looking at about a million dollars to move all that equipment that we just put in out here, back out there to the sheriff's office. So, the installation of our new product is gonna go right in out there at AFCO Road.
I appreciate your leadership on that project, too.
Well, it's long overdue, I promise you, you know, and, and I tell you, there's a lot of.
The appreciation or the project?
The project. The project, you know, it's, there, a lot of, a lot of people have been involved in this, from the sheriff's office, from the PD, fire department, utility, you know. Now, keep in mind, this is a public safety project, but it's citywide. You know, everybody who operates a portable mobile radio in the city of West Memphis is on this, on this system, you know. I talked to AWIN yesterday, and I think, you know, they allowed me 25% over the number of users just to add for some, you know, some growth, but we're right at 500 subscribers on this system. So, it's, it's, it's a big advantage for AWIN to get some better coverage over here, it's a better advantage for us, interoperable communications is a priority, you know, none of us can do any of this alone now, we're looking at civil unrest situations up on this bridge more routinely, the state police are chasing folks left and right out here on the interstate, where they're requesting deputies and city police officers, so we have to be able to talk to each other, and this system is gonna allow that to happen.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Council McCrum, keep in mind, if you don't spend nothing, you're not gonna get nothing.
Well, Ms. Harris, it wasn't, it wasn't not spending the money, it was the share of the expense.
Yeah.
We know we gotta spend.
I know, you tight, you so tight, you squitch when you walk.
I got one, one announcement that I wanna make that I'm very excited about, I can't necessarily tell you the name just yet, but I wanna say that August 21st, I will be making a big announcement to the city of West Memphis that I'm so proud of. My vision of making West Memphis a tourism destination is coming true. You know, this past weekend, well, before I get to that part, I'm just gonna tell you all, this new project that I'm gonna name on the 21st, it's gonna bring over 225 good paying jobs, it's gonna bring over 100,000 people off the interstates to spend money within our community. One of the things I've been saying for the longest is that we got over 85,000, 9,000 vehicles that's coming through West Memphis today, and what, how we have done to draw some of that traffic off the interstate, besides the ones that are going to Southland. And I think this is truly gonna happen, and making West Memphis a tourist destination spot, once this hit West Memphis, you're gonna have people coming here and staying, you have people coming here with the investment that the city council is making in Tilden Rogers with new tournaments coming in for baseball, as well as what going on on the river, which is our Big River Crossing Ducks Unlimited, our historical racetrack that's going on. You're gonna see people truly stopping in West Memphis and spending the money. I'm proud of our Parks Department and what they have done here in the city, they have done an amazing job, they are making things that we thought that couldn't happen actually happen when it comes to our children in our community. If you go by and I ask you all at the latest council, stop by at the inclusive park, and you'll see the difference that that is making, you look at the different things, the structure that it has, that it's making in our city is good, along with our, with our police department, they're doing everyday guys and ladies, they're putting their lives on the line every day to keep our community safe, and I wanna thank them for that, as well as our fire department, I appreciate you all for what you all are doing for our community. And this big party that I'm about to announce on the 21st, they flew me out to Denver, and I walked into one of the facilities, and I almost fell out because I have never seen anything of its magnitude, and it's coming to West Memphis, I'm telling you all, you all are definitely gonna be proud about it, I'm looking forward to it, and, and so many different things that's going on in West Memphis, but, you know, one of the guys said to me in Denver, Colorado, he said, "You from West Memphis?" I said, "Yeah." "I love West Memphis," I said, "What do you know about West Memphis?" "The West Memphis Three." I said, "What?" "That's the best thing you can come up with," but he said, "Yes," but it showed there's a need for a museum here in West Memphis to highlight the rich music history that we have had, the different things that goes on in West Memphis, so it's a need for that. When you add all those things together, and you see, Southland is gonna bring projected over 7 million people here for the year, this is truly a destination city. And while these people are saying that West Memphis is not growing, that is not true, West Memphis is growing. I, sometime I look over on Facebook, and I have gotten to a point that now I just read Facebook, and I know not to comment, because West Memphis is not what one group of person people make West Memphis to be, and I have looked at that, and I learned that because if they, if West Memphis was thought of as the way they made it, I wouldn't be mayor right now. But, look, I have, I have been successful in the last two times I have ran. So, I just wish that people stopped pinning West Memphis down, because West Memphis is not what you all, what, no, let me say that, people say, not what. not what you all, what, no, let me say that, be specific, not what you think it is. It's okay for all of us to disagree, and we can still love West Memphis something, we just gonna disagree about, but when it comes down for me, for infrastructure in this city, to make sure that the people that are complaining about flooding, and we getting these bios taken care of, we closing these open ditches, it has to be done. When it comes down to talking about an aquatic center, recreational center for our youth, when I'm sitting here seeing young black men die in a race of no form, as well as giving our seniors something to do and making sure our kids, a young lady walked in here, and I guess some of y'all probably didn't remember this, but she said, "You may not save our generation, but the generation behind me could be saved, that's who I'm fighting for." When you look and see the things that happen in our community, when y'all are running and myself are running from an issue, guess what, the men and women out there, they are running to it. Where houses is on fire, I'm trying to get out because it's too hot for me, the guys and ladies are running into it. So you can be selfish and say, "Well, hey, you don't want it for this reason and that because you have that God-given right here in the United States." But don't make it seem like the mayor, it's about defeating the mayor, because guess what, the mayor have won every election that has been against him. So evidently, something is right, but most importantly, I'm not ashamed to say it, I have God's paper, if you ain't figured it out yet. If you ain't figured it out yet, you're gonna keep hurting a city that has the ability to keep growing and keep watching it. We are going to keep growing whether you with it or not.
Amen.
You ain't nobody to stop this train.
Amen, amen.
So I'd rather for you to get on board, to, to give your opinion, to see how you can do this and do that, but just thinking you're gonna stop it because you don't like that, I know some people out here, there's some people out here, if God said, "I can come get you tomorrow and take you to heaven," but it gonna take you a one percent tax, they'll go to hell.
Amen, amen, you're right.
So is it best to get on board or get ran over?
That's right, I'm gonna put you...
I have no more announcements, citizen requests, we have a Ms. Veronica Love, is she here? Will you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Veronica Love, and I am the owner of Home Healthcare Agency of Arkansas. Our headquarters is out of Little Rock, but we do have a office here in West Memphis, and we're also trying to bring transportation, a lucrative amount of transportation to your area, Southern Carrier Services, we're also in the Little Rock area, we transport about sixty people a day, and so we're transporting your family members and people that you know all the way from Little Rock, we're coming to West Memphis to take them to Little Rock if they have a doctor's appointment. That's a strain on employment for, for me to, to keep doing, so I thought, why not just open up here, okay, and so that we can provide services for the area and the counties close to you as well. We offer non-emergency transportation, our wheelchair vans are hybrid vans, some of our cars are hybrid vans, so we have pretty much mostly new equipment. We employ forty-seven people just on the transportation side, I think we can do the same thing here in West Memphis, we're gonna bring jobs to your area where we can hire in your area, and it's decent pay compared to the casino and what they pay as well. Home Healthcare Agency of Arkansas has been in business for six years, we work with all the hospitals, we work with the VA, and we will do the same thing in this area as well. We work full-time and part-time positions, we have firefighters on part-time positions doing transportation, so it would bring more income to the households here in this area, which would provide better incomes in the household here, they don't have to travel, they'll be back home the same day. And we're located right now, Home Healthcare Agency of Arkansas, on five-oh-two North Missouri Street. Any questions? Any question, yes, ma'am.
Are you Medicaid provider?
We work with United Health, which is through Motive Care, Arkansas is a Medicaid and a brokered state, so even though we're not signed up with them directly, there's a broker that we're signed up with.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yes, and they have to have United Healthcare to get your services?
They don't have to have United Healthcare, Varida offers a service in your area that we're looking at signing up with that's through Medicaid, and some of them are veterans, the veteran VA hospital will, will pay for that transport for some of them, and then some of them are self-insured, and some have long-term care insurance that may also step in and pay. It's kinda unique for different families, and then we have, we do donate some transports because some of these dialysis runs are life-threatening and things like that, so we do what we can to make sure that if you need transportation and you call us, that we can try to provide it.
But you're already operating here, right?
Our Home Healthcare Agency is already has an office here, we're already, and we're operating transportation in Little Rock, but we do service some residents in West Memphis, but we're coming from Little Rock, so I'm trying to stop that gap.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, actually, what we do, we got your application and we'll review it and at the next council meeting, which would be the eighth, or you want, which would be the eighth?
Okay.
Then we will approve it, approval or deny.
Okay.
It'll go from the council will.
Okay, well, so I'll be back on the eighth, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor, it's the fifteenth.
Sure.
Go ahead, no.
Special counsel meeting on the eighth, at one o'clock.
Mayor, I'd like to get my charity, charity funds.
Sure, hold on, I gotta make a motion, can I get someone to make a motion in second to add it to the agenda first?
Oh, okay. So moved.
All right, pay by? Oppose? All right, all right, Counselor.
Mr. Perry? Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So the Southland, today I just got a check from the mayor for charity day, and it is eight-hundred-and-nine dollars per person, so I think the, you added it to the agenda, but we haven't done a formal distribution.
Okay.
So I don't know how we need to handle that. If you approve the distribution of eight-hundred-and-nine dollars apiece, and then he can give out his money.
All right, can I get a motion in second to add the eight-hundred-and-nine dollars?
So moved.
Counselor. All right, pay by? Oppose?
Okay, so, before you start, Ms. Melanie, you remember what we...
Yeah, and will I be able to do that next week, when we talk about...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, because I didn't know. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I would like to get the full eight-hundred to one of the City Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
And I will find out how much I got left at the next meeting, all right?
So prior to this, the only person that, councilperson that had any money was Ms. Mohammed, so everybody was zeroed out.
Okay.
Were there anyone else that want to give any charity money? Not hearing none, all right, pay by? Oppose? It's approved. Uh, did any council need to add something before we adjourn? All right, hearing none, can I get a motion in second to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
It's a second.
We adjourn?
All right, pay by? Oppose?